Call to order this meeting of the Committee of the Whole and Committee on Finance and Property is a budget hearing. That is what our agenda is this evening. Ms. Dixon, could you please call the roll?
Ames.
Here.
Copeland, I think he's here. Flaherty is on his way. Feldman.
Here.
Flowers.
Here.
Hausmann.
Here.
Rotundo.
Here.
Rand. And Guanci.
I am here. Script for remotely conducted Finance and Property and Committee of the Whole meeting Wednesday, June 2, 2021. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Finance and Property and Committee of the Whole budget meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly, and I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. All good? Excellent. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. I'm sorry, I'm just smiling because I just realized, God willing, this is the last time I'm going to have to read this. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. If you're watching at home, the chance for the public to comment on the budget will be at our Public Hearing of the Budget or Special City Council meeting on Monday, June 14, at 7:00 p.m. According to you, please be aware that other participants and viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer, and all participants should keep their microphones and films muted, unless recognized by Council Flaherty this evening to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. And there's nothing that we'll be voting on tonight. So let's turn it on to over to the Chairman of Finance and Property, Councilor Tim Flaherty. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. President. And as I said last night, and so the department heads know, we're not going to be taking any votes tonight. We have a lot on the agenda. And what we're trying to do, we're not going line by line. We're going to go department by department, to make it a little bit more efficient, and make it a little easier for people at home, and also the department heads, so we can get a better overall vision of where they're looking to head their departments in the next year, and for councilors to ask questions. And even though this is a Finance and Property meeting, it's also Committee of the Whole, I invite the rest of the council to take part in some of the questions and comments that we did last night. Last night went well. So what'll further ado, we're going to have Mary Ann Holak from the Council on Aging to talk to you about her budget, and then the council will ask some questions.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flaherty, and the rest of the city council. It's no secret that we were coming out of a terrible, horrible, bad, bad year. And I just want to start by saying thank you to everyone here, and on the staff of the city, and of the senior center, and to the whole community for doing something, some acts of kindness for somebody else during this past year. I've seen a tremendous amount of community spirit in helping one another, and it really has made a difference to so many people who, you know, were really were bound to stay home. We had lots of adult children telling their parents, you can't leave the house. And people were stepping up to do grocery shopping, and snow shoveling, and going to the pharmacy. And we really just, I just want to make sure that everyone in the community knows how much I appreciate that. We don't have the 2021 census yet, but it's looking that like there's over 9,000 people who are age 60 and over living in Beverly. So getting close to 25% of our population. And my staff and I have never really taken time off this whole year. So we started at the beginning just making, you know, those reassurance phone calls, connecting people to services. Bootstrap is just a wonderful organization, and we are still delivering fresh produce, fresh goods and health-related goods every other week. And our bus drivers, who were off the road for many months, when they came back to work, they started delivering the food to people who couldn't come over to the senior center to pick it up. So everybody has pitched in in so many different ways. But food accessibility, I think, has been one of the things that we have been most surprised about and concerned about. And I think I just read over at Turtle Woods in Turtle Creek that Bootstrap delivered like 3,000 bags of groceries over the year. I'm just, it's just been a hard year for everybody. Now, we're to the point of people are emerging, and we're having, we've had 27 housing crises in the last three months. So people who are being evicted, people who are already homeless, people whose rent went up and they can no longer afford their rent. The process to help someone apply for public housing is a very long process. So I have two staff people are mostly devoting, you know, all of their time to helping people fill out those applications, connecting them with resources. Yesterday, a woman showed up. I think, I'm going to tell you, she was 80 years old. I'm not quite sure. I don't quite remember. But homeless as of that day. And the best senior care could do was to give her a list of shelters. And it's, it's just been, it's hard for me as a person, a Beverlyite, and as a social worker, to hear these stories and to see how rough life is for some of our fellow citizens. And so we also have had to file 13 protective services in the last 90 days to senior care. Many of them are on the housing, complicated housing issues, a lot of mental health concerns, and a lot of some family, family issues. Not as much self-neglect as you would think, but I believe that's probably out there as well. So, you know, we're really feeling it over here, in terms of the work that we do. And I think you all know, I have a small staff, considering that two are in maintenance and four are in transportation, you know. And even my activities coordinator, who, you know, would typically be like coordinating programs and activities, is doing hands-on direct service. The social workers are doing a little planting project, like small group therapy, to talk about the pandemic, and how it's affected people, and what they can look forward to in the, in the coming year. So, you know, if, if people didn't think of us as the only social service agency in Beverly for older adults, they should be thinking of us as that now. It's basically all that we're doing, whether we're the activities coordinator, or the volunteer coordinator, you know, even the maintenance guys who find people in the parking lot who, who need help. So anyways, enough about that. Looking to the future, we are definitely planning an event for Senior Day in the Park. Personally, don't think it's going to be as large as it's been in the past, for two reasons. We lost our biggest support group of volunteers, electric insurance company. They're not able to support the event this year. But also, seniors, not all seniors are ready to go out to a large event. And the Center for Disease Control is still recommending that older adults avoid large events. So with that being said, we, we're trying to moderate the numbers, but not have a waiting list, like not turn anybody away. And we're not going to be selling tickets till July, but people who love that event will be able to purchase a ticket in July. And that will be held on, on Thursday, August 5. And there's still time to nominate a senior of the year. So if any of you have somebody who you think would be a great senior of the year, you have until next Friday to submit your application. And then if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can I nominate Paul Guanci?
Sure. I'll send you the form.
I think that, although no, you have to be over 60. So I think that the only councilors that are eligible would be, of course, the granddaddy of them all, Councilor Hausmann, and newly, our new 60-year-old Councilor Ames.
Well, we were, we did have somebody ask us if we would consider changing the name of the senior center, which we laughed about at our Council on Aging Board meeting. I said, you just wait till I retire, then you can name it after me, and there'll be no problem. But I don't feel that we need to change our name. I mean, we would only come up with another euphemism for growing old. And, you know, we're supposed to be embracing our age, and, you know, looking forward to the future, even if it's, you know, five years or 20 years, or tomorrow. We don't, we're not, never guaranteed, you know, even tomorrow. So, you know, I don't, I don't have any motivation to really change the name, but I do know that younger, younger older adults really resent that term, senior. But I want them to embrace it, you know, unless they can come up with a better, a better name. I think, you know, let's just stick with what we've got.
Any of the councilors, Finance and Property, have any questions? Mary Ann?
Councilor Rand?
I do. Thank you. Am I unmuted yet? I am. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to ask, thank you, Mary Ann Holak, for being here. I'm always interested to hear your update. And I'm saddened to hear the issues that are, the real-time issues that you're sharing with us on housing. And I'm looking forward to working with you on that, to see what are some creative solutions we can come up with, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that the Housing Trust can, Commission can consider as a priority issue. And so, just something to think about. I just wanted to ask you about really the only, your part-time line item, which is on page 101, and it's line item 51699. I'm just curious, did that go down because of pandemic? Or can you just explain to me, it looks like you're being funded less than that you spent more this year? Just walk me through that a little.
Sure. We had two part-time outreach coordinator positions, and both of them were vacant. And so at the beginning of, it wasn't in July, but in September, the mayor okayed us merging those positions into one position, and hiring a full-time outreach coordinator, which we were successfully able to do in December. And she just jumped right into delivering holiday baskets and sending holiday cards, and then into helping people get their vaccination appointments. So talk about trial by fire, surely.
Yeah.
How to help people fill out their housing applications. I mean, my staff actually drives the applications over to the Beverly Housing Authority office, because many of the consumers don't have transportation. They're making sure those applications get to where they need to be. And that, you know, I just can't say enough about the people who, who work here. They really stepped it up this year.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm seeing that, the full-time, you'd walked us through the full-time, and I see your asterisk there, that two part-time positions were combined. So you just have, you still have these, you have part-time social workers, and just the part-time drivers and volunteer coordinator now?
Right.
Okay.
The social work position is 19 and a half hours, but 9.75 of those hours come out of our state formula grant. So the city has, they're funding half of that position, social work position.
Okay. Are you, and I know I can do this research too, but just if you have the information right now today, how does our, our Council on Aging compare to other cities of the same size staffing-wise?
Everybody has, I mean, Our Towne Salem and Peabody both have three and four people in their outreach department. And we have one full-time person. So I would say, comparing those departments, we're, we're pretty far behind. And we, we have been able to really capitalize on Salem State Social Work interns, Gordon College in Social Work interns. We've really been able to extend our reach, because we've had some wonderful interns. But wouldn't I like that, to have, to have some, some more capacity for that kind of a staff. Directors-wise, you know, all my director friends, they work so hard, and every single one of us are burned out, because we care so much about the people that we serve. And we've lost a lot of people. And I don't know that everybody appreciates that, how many sympathy cards we've written, and stories we've told about people that we knew, different than, you know, than their families even knew. One of my counterparts sent some pictures of someone who passed away to his family. He was at the Red Sox, and he was at Mohegan Sun. And the family had no idea that their 90-year-old dad had gone off to the Red Sox game, or to the casino. And so the people that we know are living their lives with us in different ways than they are with their family. And it, I felt obligated, and I've wanted to acknowledge their passing. So anyways, I would, you know, Salem, Peabody, Danvers, I mean, every one of us have been doing the job for a long time, in different ways. And, you know, I think all of us are pretty flexible in terms of, you know, what our cities need and, and ask of us.
Will you have some interns this year?
We have two Salem State Social Work interns coming, but our biggest disappointment is our Community Engagement Fellow from Merrimack, which is, we've had for six years in a, in a row, although we didn't have one last year. We did not get matched with a student this year. So that's a 25-hour-a-week fellowship that we're going to be missing. So we haven't quite figured out how we're going to manage that, but that is, that is something that we need to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your updates. I appreciate it.
Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, I really appreciate your, your comments, and, and Councilor Rand's questions as well. It's, I cannot even imagine, it feels like to me so often that we've lost so much of a generation. And that impact on you and your staff personally is, is really direct. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And one of the questions that I had, it's not so much on this budget, but it was like, it seems to me, to an extent, because of this pandemic, what you have done has changed so much. And the direct access, almost like the library that you have to so many in the city, is just even that much more important. I hope that at some point, we have the opportunity, in the clerk's office, actually, to have a conversation about sort of re-envisioning government, in a way, through your eyes, so that we can make sure that you have the resources you need, and you may be able to serve people my age and older in the community as efficiently and thoroughly as possible. Because I think those conversations post-COVID are really important in terms of education, health support, homelessness, or just housing, healthcare, culture, quality of life issues, that I think the senior center can be a linchpin for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I would say, we had the Secretary of Elder Affairs out here last week to go on a walk in the woods with us. And she said it was reinvigorating. And I feel like we all need to be reinvigorated. And it's going to be a new normal. It's not going to be the way it always was. And, you know, we're going to just have to face people's resistance to change, and, and really, you know, re-envision the senior center as, as a place where everyone's welcome. So, thank you.
Councilor Flowers?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Ms. Holak, for being here with us and for presenting your budget. I just wanted to mention, when you were talking about the sympathy cards that you sent, I just wanted to lift up that it really made me think of when I did my chaplaincy internship. And ostensibly, chaplain interns are there to learn about care for patients. And it became clear to me that a large part of what care was provided by hospital chaplains was actually for doctors, nurses, and caregivers. And so I'm just thinking about you and your staff in sort of that same capacity, that, that you are caregivers. And so there's also need for us to acknowledge, and, and thank you, and try to lift up some of what you've been doing, and just, and the pain that you carry. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that I heard that, and thank you for what you do. I had two questions for you, if I may. The first is that I just wanted to mention, I, and I know some other councilors here too, had the opportunity to join with some of your seniors on the, one of the Walk in the Woods, some of the walks in the woods.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you.
And I wanted to say, first of all, what a great program. I know that was a grant that you were able to get to do that. I wondered, do you have, do you envision seeking out more grants for that kind of programming? Or would you like to see programming like that become part of your, your, your budget? Where do you see that going?
Most of our program expenses actually come from that enterprise fund, because we charge a, a small fee, not a membership fee, but like, you know, $5 for this event, or whatever. But this past year, Eastern Bank actually gave us a $10,000 grant. And so almost every single thing we did for seniors this year, we did at no cost to them, which felt really great. And, you know, because Bootstrap and other people at Christmas time just really stepped up to the plate. So now I've lost track of what your question was. Sorry.
Well, it's sort of, I think it feeds into my next question. So I'll, if it's, if it's okay, I'll give you the next one. And I think they feed into each other, because my next question for you was, what are one or two, I, I agree with Councilor Ames, that there's things, especially in a post-COVID world, that, that we sort of had sort of a bright light shined on what, what governments at all levels can and do, and maybe will need to in the future, do better providing. And so I think that a lot of social service and kind of personal touch, that's where we're going to see more need, as you're lifting up. So my question for you is, are there one or two, are there wish list items that your budget can accommodate right now, but you, you would like to see us bear in mind, or be thinking about?
Now I remember your first question about grant opportunities. And one thing I will say about a Walk in the Woods program, we've always thought that outdoor programming would be important for a younger generation of seniors. And really, all ages are participating in this program. Somebody on the Open Space and Rec Committee works at Beverly Hospital, and he connected with the Community Benefits person at Beverly Hospital. And I got like a surprise email from her, saying, we want to support your program. So they matched the grant that we already got, so we could actually repeat the program again. I don't know if we're going to do it late, late summer or early fall, but we'll repeat the program again. And the idea is just to kind of build on. Okay, so we have 12 people who know the trails, and feel comfortable walking, have made maybe some new friends, have all the gear they need, their water bottle and their fanny pack, and all the things that the grant allowed us to purchase. And we'll, we'll be able to continue that, and maybe take a leadership role at some point, and lead, and lead a group. So we really hope we can monopolize on those outdoor programming, and see where else it will take us. And, you know, wouldn't everyone love us to get more funding for the Cook's Night Off program? Oh my gosh, that program, you know, 15 minutes and 25 people are signed up. And thanks to some of our restaurants, we've been able to accommodate more people. Like, we had 35 people, so 10 people off the waiting list last week, when Super Sub was our heater room. So it was really nice, and people are just really happy, not to have to cook a meal, to get a healthy meal, to see each other out in our parking lot. And the fresh produce that we're also providing, it's expensive. And they don't want to go into the grocery store all the time. So they can take home, you know, some spinach, and a watermelon, and a few bananas, and have some nice fresh food for the weekend. So yeah, when those opportunities come along, I do like to pursue them. We don't have a lot of time, but I know that we have some grant writers at City Hall, or at least one. So yes, I'm certainly hope to be able to pursue some other grants. And in terms of wish list, I think we're going to need a housing specialist, even if it's only for a temporary position. Because I don't see the housing problems going away. I just, until, you know, Briscoe comes online, and some of the other things that are in the works, it's not affordable for an older person on a fixed budget to live in Beverly. And if a landlord, if they live in a private housing, and the landlord decides to raise the rent, they don't have the capacity to pay that rent, that, that rent increase. And, and, you know, some of the older landlords did pass away this year. And so now their families are turning over the homes, you know, evicting people, so they can, you know, recreate it for them, their own families, or, you know, for a new, new vision for that home. So I think that would be my, the first thing on my wish list, is more of that. And when we get, because then our full-time outreach worker can start going out to the Housing Authority buildings and doing outreach there, and meeting new people, and connecting new people to services. We have a very small financial aid fund in our enterprise fund, and it, it's usually paid for by the commissions we would make on a trip we would sponsor. So a travel agency would, you know, take people to, you know, wherever, Rhode Island for the day, and we'd get a commission check, and we'd put it into that financial aid fund, that people can apply for up to $300 a year. I think that that kind of opportunity for people on fixed incomes to have a source to apply for some extra funding would also be important. In Peabody, they actually, the Habitat for Humanity actually has Community Preservation Act funds to do home improvement projects for elders. So if there's ever any way we could find grant funding for that, we want people to stay in their homes as long as they're safe. And, you know, I think the fire chief and the police chief would tell you that their guys have seen a lot of unsafe places, where people really need help in either fixing it up, or moving, moving on from where they're at. So I don't want to monopolize the conversation anymore. Are there other questions?
Don't have time for any.
I know. Sorry.
Councilor Hausmann?
Yeah. Excuse me. Good evening, Mary Ann. Great to see you. I want to acknowledge your presence in Ward 4, and as, as an individual constituent, and also just to, just kudos to the newsletter that you send out every month, which is so positive, and buoyant, and caring. It's, it's just really terrific. I really have two questions, but I think in the interest of time, I'll just give passing notice to one of them, which is the, excuse me, the physical plant issues, about repairing the parking lot, the sidewalk, and also the air filter units inside the building. I note in your, in your budget, that 14 out of, excuse me, four out of 17 have been replaced. The budget provides for two more, but that still leaves a good number of, of units. And, and I hope that perhaps the, and I don't know what the relative need is in other buildings, it's really for DPS and the mayor to sort of figure out. But, but I hope that there may be available, availability within some portion of the mayor's budget, say, reserved for appropriation, or something that would enable greater speed in replacing those, in those units, given what we know about aging and vulnerability to illness. So that, that's, that's just a comment. What I really wanted to sort of drill into for a moment is, is the housing issue. Your, your story of an 80-year-old who's been evicted from their apartment due to lack of funds, and I know there's a waiting list at the Beverly Housing Authority, at least last I checked, is absolutely heartrending, when you think about the, the lack of available resources for housing. And, and so I, I guess I'd love to talk with you maybe offline about some, you know, exploring some possibilities that, that, you know, might be out there, trying to come up with some creative solutions. You actually mentioned CPC money.
Right.
And I wonder if the CPC could do a, for example, just sort of off the top of my head, some kind of out-of-cycle grant for emergency housing assistance to seniors. Sort of like a, you know, a bridge, if you will. I don't know. I just, I can only imagine, as someone who is a caregiver for two elderly relatives, what, how awful it might be to be 80 years old and homeless. Because I'm, I'm, you know, sort of generally aware of the lack of resources for homeless individuals anyway. And these are people, it sounds like, are not being evicted, excuse me, are not homeless because of mental illness issues, but just strictly economic. So I just pledged that I'll get in touch with you offline, and maybe, you know, we can put our heads together, and, and, you know, if anything I can do to sort of help in that. can put our heads together and, you know, anything I can do to sort of help in that, that's just really, just cries out for some response.
I appreciate your help.
Any other final questions from the council? Mary Ann, thank you so much for coming. Very intuitive and very helpful, all the great things that you do, all your long, knowing yourself and your staff, and so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Have a good rest of the evening.
We're going to jump up a little bit here. We're going to change a little bit, try to get some of the other departments in here. I'm going to bring Mark Foster up. He's on page 64. Mark?
Turn my voice on, turn my picture on, how's that?
Great.
Good evening, Mark Foster here. Ready to answer questions or questions or? I'll just give you a brief. Did everybody get around the endless emails I send now, right? Because they go to that general distribution. And so I guess you pretty much know where we're at. I just give you the highlights and the lowlights of the last COVID year. The, some of the best things we did, we were able to work with Bill Burke and his people. We delivered the first vaccine to first responders back in February. I think in Beverly, we were able to do some of the first people that got vaccines in the state, the first responders, do those for a week. And then we followed up the next week after that. One of the disappointments was we could not get any extra vaccine. I would like to run some more vaccination clinics. The mayor and I worked with everyone and we just couldn't break the code to get vaccine. I don't know what the story was. It's a very confusing issue to this day because we had a vaccine went in the very first few months of this pandemic. But then I guess everything's kind of more or less straightened out. We did our last clinic with the VA up here and some of the veterans last month, and that went pretty smoothly. The other thing is, in the beginning, also, I don't know if you were aware, we supplied the nursing homes with PPE before anybody could get it. So the nursing homes in this town, in the city, took the biggest hit with people dying. I haven't got the numbers right here because I live at home, but the largest percentage of people died in nursing homes in the very first few months of it. And some of it would have been preventable if they had the proper PPE. However, there was no PPE to be had. And we did it in our, because I had some federal and some state PPE up there, we dispatched what we could to the nursing homes, we got what we could, we went to everybody we could. And we got some out, I don't know if everybody ever heard the story about the nursing home. I asked, we asked if they had any PPE, any issues. And the nurse wrote, she said, we were using raincoats we bought down the street, we got masks we made out of handkerchiefs, and this is all we've got, and there are people dying here. It was really sad. But we did what we best we can and we finally got, I think we finally got everybody straightened out, or at least we got as good as we could do. And that was another story for another day, but everything worked out fairly well for our nursing homes. And eventually the state did catch up and started to be able to get some stuff to the right places. The other issue we had was, in the city, much of the funding we got was from FEMA. And FEMA does it through a grant program. And the grant, not a lot of people, if you do a lot of hurricane work or work with disasters, like the city will get a hurricane every couple of years. So Tracy and the DPW department is pretty familiar with this. But we were running some big numbers, if you can, if you look at some of the dates, I mean, some of the issues that the statistics have put out. And I think there was a changing floor level, where they would fund, they'd fund some, some amount, they wouldn't the other. People were very, there was a lot of confusion about what was going on as far as grant work was eligible. So we were able, because we were, we do a lot of FEMA grants, and they're all really the same thing, they're all off the federal's two CFR section. And we were familiar with this. We worked very closely with Brian Ailes' people and Catherine Barrett. And we were able to get some good money and we spent, I think we, I think we did, we're very responsible with how we spent our money. I think we'll get it all back. I don't know how other cities are, but between Brian Ailes' people and Catherine Barrett and the people at City Hall, all the money was spent very well. It was very carefully spent. There was no willy-nilly money spent. And it was done very properly. I just, that's, I think, and I think they don't get that much credit for that. Some people think the people, but they did a great job. And now we have the new grant money coming through, so we'll have to try to pick that out because it's a little different and it's a little more political than it was before. But we'll try to get the best we can do. And we get a big bang for the buck out of the money and coming to Beverly. And then the other thing we did is we wound up being the centralized PPE, Protective Clothing Center for the City. We have a storage location now, the city funded that and through FEMA. And now we have enough, we could go for two or three months with stuff going upside down, have enough PPE. I don't think we'll ever have the issue coming with the nursing homes again in the city. And that's about it. I'll ask, I'm going to ask some questions, I'll give you some answers I owe.
Any councilors from the Finance and Property Committee have any questions? Questions from the rest of the council? Okay. Mark, thank you for all you do, appreciate it. And I'm sure if we have any other questions, we'll reach out to you.
Oh, thank you very much. And you get my number and hopefully we'll be able to start sending less mail to you and we'll eventually shut it off. The end is near and it really kind of feels a little good that I think that the end is coming, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up will be Dan McPherson, the Harbor Master.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now you can. Go ahead.
I'm not too good at this, I apologize. Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a too hard act to follow, I guess. But I'll keep it short and sweet. We're preparing for a busy summer. We think a lot of people are going to be very active after being pent up for a year. We're seeing July temperatures in May. So we're expecting a busy season and we're preparing for that. And other than that, if there's any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them.
Any questions from the committee? Counselor Rand?
Thank you. This is more, this is more of a comment. I just wanted to thank Mr. McPherson for his work with the Harbor Management Authority. I feel like this year, that those two bodies have been coordinating better and there's, I just see you working really well with Harbor Management Authority to deal with some of the issues that are coming up because of all the changes down on the waterfront. So thank you for that. And I do think too, and you can, maybe you can tell me too, what you saw as a change down on the, in the public arena and on the waterfront last year, what during the kind of the peak of summer and pandemic, were there more boaters out there? Were there more people fishing? Were there things that you came across that were sort of unusual or extreme?
I think last year, according to all the statistics, boating incidents and boating activity was up by 20%. And I think, you know, the people had no other place to go or that, you know, they felt safe away from, you know, crowded places. So we've seen an increase in activity. It's been steady, I think, the last year, and I really expect this to be a busy summer.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much for your work. Appreciate it. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Any other questions from the council? Well, getting off easy, Dan.
Well, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Mr. President, I just want to take this opportunity to say before I figure out how to get off of this meeting with my little phone here, that it's been an absolute pleasure working with you two gentlemen. I'm really going to miss working with you. I'm really going to miss you on the council, and I hope that you both will stay active in the city of Beverly and be as much of a great example to the citizens of this community. And thank you.
Really appreciate it, Dan. You've been easy to work with and you've done a great job over the years. So that makes not only my job, but the president's job and the rest of the council's job easier when you're doing great work on the harbor and every, all the other good things you have done in your years in Beverly. Paul?
Yeah, just to follow up and say, yeah, thanks, Dan. It's been a pleasure. I mean, it's been a long time. We've worked together 20 out of the past 22 years. And would you believe the McDonald's building was finally taken down, right? And we talked about that in the late 90s and it's really happening. So thanks for all you do down there and hopefully you have a few more years left.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilors. Have a good night.
You too. Take care. We're going to move on to Lisa Kent on page 12, the city clerk's office.
I really don't have much difference in the budget, just any questions you can take.
Do any of the members of the council, Finance, Property Committee have any questions? You can come back. Any questions from the rest of the council? We know this budget pretty well, it is pretty clear. We know we can find you, Lisa, too, after this meeting, so just in case.
And I usually update you guys with whatever's going on in the office anyways each week. So I don't need to take some time to do it now.
And just in case, Kristin's going to be a backup.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here are no questions or comments up. Counselor Housman?
Yeah, I just want to take a brief, big thank you to Lisa. I have found her to be terrifically responsive, incredibly helpful, very friendly, easy to work with. And I just, I just really want to, you know, make that, make that a public appreciation. So thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your work.
Thanks. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.
You know, that is true, going in here from a change and having you step up to the plate from my position here and in the charter and through my years on the council, you've been a pleasure to work with and makes things a lot easier. You're real people and it makes things a lot easier, I'm sure, for the public to deal with as well. Mr. President?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what more can you say? Lisa makes my job as council president that much easier. She's well-prepared and she makes me look more prepared than I usually am. So I appreciate that immensely. And it's been such a tough year where everything's been done remotely. Lisa and I had a conversation the other day about getting back into City Hall in June and next Monday, the 7th, and we've only had one meeting live together in city council chambers. So I will enjoy everyone from now until the end of the year. So thank you for all you do, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Council flowers.
Thank you. I'll be really brief. I just wanted to say on the note of what you all are saying, I wanted to share a, just a really quick story. I was at Tartine recently having a meeting and a woman pulled up in a car, an older woman who was lost. She was trying to find a friend's house. She was from Danvers. She did not have a cell phone. She couldn't remember how to get to her friend's house. And so I was trying to help her with another gentleman who was with me. And all I could think to do was, she knew her friend's name and we couldn't find it looking up online. So I texted Lisa and said, are you in the office? I need some help looking up somebody in Beverly and where they live. And Lisa was not in the office, but she still got back to me in about two minutes with that, with the address, and we were able to get that woman connected with her friend. So I think that's just such an example of a city clerk going above and beyond and her staff as well and helping someone who was really in need and helping me help someone who's in need. So that's not reflected in the budget I suppose, except to Lisa and her team and the staffing. But I think that's such a great example of what you all are talking about.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll let you go, Lisa, and you have a good night and we'll be, we'll see you very soon, I'm sure.
We will. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Animal Control on page 49 with Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to open, if I may. Everyone sees us around the city everywhere, all the time, and may not truly realize the duties and responsibilities we have day in, day out. So I just wanted to give a quick rundown on what my department does on a day-to-day basis. We're charged, first and foremost, as a public safety department with the enforcement of all laws relative to animals, both on the state and the local side. So part of that, we're responsible for ensuring the compliance with dog licensing and rabies immunizations for cats, dogs, and all ferrets residing within the city of Beverly. We handle and investigate complaints daily, including but not limited to nuisances such as barking dogs, animal bites, wildlife calls, and of course, animal cruelty and neglect concerns. Part of our day-to-day, we patrol parks, beaches, cemeteries, and trail systems within the city to ensure compliance with various city ordinances. As you know, there's a lot of that open space within the city still, so that's, there's a lot of ground to cover. We work with the Board of Health very closely on rabies-related matters, also with animal inspections, with the keeping of animals regulation through the Board of Health, any animals such as chickens, goats, horses, et cetera, essentially anything other than what's considered your typical domestic animal, such as a cat or a dog, you're required to have a permit for. So we're charged with going to those properties and doing a site visit and referring back to the Board of Health, whether or not they qualify at that time for a permit. We're also charged with the duty of inspecting dog kennels within the city, commercial kennels such as dog daycares. We do that on an annual basis. We work with the Police Department, the MSPCA boss and Animal Rescue League boss and the Mass Environmental Police regarding animal cruelty and neglect cases, as well as hunting, fishing, wildlife laws, and complaints on that side, along with other various tasks that it would take too long to mention all of them. But first and foremost, you know, my biggest thing is ensuring that my staff, and as I said, we are a department of two, full-time, myself included, but to ensure that we're always up to date when it comes to education and continuing our training, make sure that we're at the top of our field. Recently, you know, we are coming to the end of the pandemic, or, you know, I knock whenever I say that. There's light at the end of the tunnel is how I'll phrase it. And unfortunately, throughout the pandemic, a lot of people got animals. There was a big rise in people getting animals, such as cats and dogs. And the number of animal relinquishments and unfortunately, animals being dumped, we have seen an increase, not just here in Beverly, but in the state. And, you know, we're here to assist with that. We are assisting people currently with that. And we want to make sure that it's done properly. So if you hear of anyone who is in need of assistance, obviously have them contact my department so we can give them the assistance that they need and give them the help and, you know, get them to where they need to be. And throughout COVID, we have assisted multiple citizens with obtaining vet care and ensuring that they have food and necessary sustenance for their animals. You know, some that may be, you know, in need of financial assistance. You know, for example, we work with them to ensure that they can obtain that sustenance as well as obtaining it at low cost. And I will, I will, I will close there. I'll stop talking, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions, probably any questions? Rest of the council having questions? Counselor Housman?
Yes, good evening, Matt. Thank you for the work you do in the city. I wonder, I recently read an article about the animal control officer in Swambsk that who was working successfully to save a hawk that had been poisoned by rodenticide. And I wondered if you could talk a little bit about whether you have run into that kind of issue in Beverly, generally speaking, and how, and whether you think of generally speaking, and, and how, and whether you think of your role, the role of your office as primarily a public health office or a public safety office? And, and, you know, just reflect upon that a little bit, if you would, please.
Certainly, Counselor. So I'll, I'll jump ahead in your question a little bit. My office, I consider it to be both public safety and public health. It overlaps so much in our day to day duties that we, we really are doing both. When it comes to rodenticide poisoning, it is an issue that we see in Beverly. As, I mean, it's, it's a statewide, it's a countrywide issue. You know, the use of rodenticide, you know, it's people think of the target species, I'll use rats, for example. But they don't think of, you know, the, the species that consider the rat prey, such as hawks, owls, et cetera. And when the, when the predator ingests the prey, it's also ingesting that rodenticide. So it's indirect poisoning. But, you know, recently, there's been stories of a bald eagle that also suffered from rodenticide poisoning. It is a, it is a growing issue. I know it's something that the environmental police, I believe, are, are working on. But it's, it's tough to, you know, to, to really wrap our, our head around. Again, it's not something that you necessarily think of as a homeowner right off the bat. You're thinking about the problem at hand, obviously. And, you know, we do our best to try and educate in terms of, you know, what may be better techniques, better practices to accomplish the goal you're looking to accomplish. And there are thankfully rescues rehab, rehabilitators for birds of prey in our area that, that do a fantastic job of rehabbing some of these birds of prey that they're actually able to save. So, you know, the credit there goes out to them. I hope that answered your question, Counselor.
Well, yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a follow up question, which you mentioned rodents, rats. There have been plenty of people who have come before the council and I know spoken with the, you know, the mayor's office on the issue of, of rodent control. And I've been doing, you know, some reading about it and some deep thinking about how to, how to approach it. And my research has shown that it's very difficult to control. And but that the sort of the best practice seems to be some kind of sustained program that is funded and has some staffing that addresses, for some reason, the term is escaping me at the moment. There's a, there's a sort of a standardized phrase for the rodent program. Maybe it'll come to me while we're talking. And it, it occurs to me that, that your office, which is that intersection between, you know, public safety and animals, is really, you know, would play an important role in the process of trying to develop a systemic approach to rodent control in the city of Beverly, you know, regardless of sort of the ick factor, if you will. I mean, there is a, there is a real true public health aspect to rodents. And so I, I just sort of want to put a marker out and say that I, you know, look forward to reaching out to you and, and trying to sort of brainstorm on developing, working perhaps to develop some kind of proposed program that would try to implement something like that. Because the reading that I've done basically suggests that even if you take care of rats in one location, all it does is hang out a no vacancy sign for other rats to come and take their place. So it's, it is, it is a very, I don't want to say intractable problem. I, I don't believe in intractable problems. I think every problem has a solution. At least that's how I approach it. But I do recognize the difficulty of doing it. And I think that whatever we may come up with is going to involve your office and working with you. So I, I look forward to having some conversations with you and, and the administration more generally about trying to come up with some kind of program. So I'll, I'll be in touch, I guess I should say.
Absolutely. No, I look forward to having conversations more on that. You know, again, you, you just said it yourself to public health in terms of rodents being a public health issue. And we work very closely with the Health Department in regards to rodent complaints. But when it comes to enforcement or corrective action or anything like that, that generally comes from the Health Department and where there is more of a helping hand to, to help out as necessary.
Understood. Yeah. And I, I think that the paradigm of how best to approach it is going to really have to sort of look at that, those relative roles and try to figure out how maybe we can move them forward in a way that might be more effective going down the road. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Council Flowers.
Thank you. Officer Lutenski, thank you for presenting. I also am looking forward to working together to tackle the rat situation. But I wondered if you would be able to just talk to us a little bit about the line item in your budget, 51310, which is the overtime line item. But I see that you have a note that's increased and targeted extra patrols. So I didn't know if you could just help us understand a little bit about what had shifted or what was causing the need for some of that increased patrolling that you were seeing.
Yeah, so the increased patrols, you know, a big piece of that is homecoming week in the past. You know, we try and have someone from my department at every homecoming event, you know, especially the ones that are at Lynch Park, given the dog restrictions at Lynch Park. The other is just throughout the summer. We've, you know, typically increased, you know, patrol focus, if you will, on, on the summer months, given the additional restrictions during the summer. And I know that you and I had a conversation about that, as well as Counselor Ames last week, I believe. So however, if you do look back in that line a few years, it was always up toward that, you know, my request for this year in terms of what we were allotted. And that did go down with COVID. And we in an effort to, to save some money. So it's more building that line back up to give the coverage, you know, where necessary and ensure that, you know, we're getting the most out of it.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And as you were beginning to explain about homecoming in summer, my follow up to you, but you anticipated it was, so this is artificially looked low, probably because some of those summer opportunities also didn't happen. So for example, in 2020, you weren't doing targeted patrols at homecoming because of COVID.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful.
Council Matundo.
Thank you, Council. Just a couple of follows to Council Flowers. Similar thing, just a couple of line items I see, saw. And I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume anything, that some of these were cut due to last year's uncertainty of the budget. So the Supplies Line, which is line 54000 and as well as the Miscellaneous 55899. Am I to assume that out of the ask of cutting back the budget, those are two of them, that you're just building back to what the budget was pre pandemic?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate you coming tonight. Answered a lot of good questions, a lot of important questions, too, for the, for the health and safety of the city. It's, sometimes it gets overbooked. So I appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of the council in the city. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilors. And as you always know, day or night, if you need something, always feel free to reach out and I'll get right back to you. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too, man. Next on the agenda, we'll go to page 106. Allison Babin from the library, and her first time, I believe, doing this budget. So welcome, Allison. Well, maybe we were here last year at the end, I think.
Thank you, Councilor Clarity. Yes, I was here last year, but very unusual year. Good evening, councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to talk a bit about the library tonight and our budget request for fiscal year 2022. As you know, we are fortunate in Beverly to have not just one library, but an entire library system with the main library, the Farms branch, and the Bookmobile. I wanted to share just a few highlights of some of our achievements during the COVID pandemic. We have checked out over 172,000 items at the main library and the Farms branch. Our Bookmobile department has delivered over 32,000 items to residents, facilities, and other locations in the city. Over 57,000 items have been checked out on Overdrive. So those are eBooks and digital audiobooks. We served over 20,000 patrons at our front door service, which was our curbside service during the pandemic, which is now retired. We had 2,733 patrons come in and use the buildings by appointment between September and early May. So I just wanted to share that to give you a little bit of a picture of how things were working this past year. In terms of programs, we've offered 365 virtual programs for people of all ages. In addition to that, we have held 146 virtual storytimes and just under 6,000 people have attended that range of programs. In addition to this course of regular business, we did have a number of special initiatives this past year that I also wanted to share a little bit about. We expanded our commitment to being more inclusive through programs, collections, and our physical space. We launched the BIPOC Voices program in partnership with Abu Toppin. We provided a number of anti racist training opportunities to our staff focused on how to create an anti racist library culture. We replaced some outdated artwork in the children's room to feature beautiful prints by a wonderful black author and illustrator, Christian Robinson. And we offered new name tags to staff so that they can actually have their name on their clothing and their pronouns if they so choose. We renovated our storytime room and our arts and crafts room. We expanded our digital collection to include new platforms like Tumble Books and the Wall Street Journal Online. We added a really robust set of holistic programming, things like yoga, art programs online, even some walks in the, walks in the area and things like that. And we significantly expanded our Library of Things collection to include items that are really helpful for parents with increased time at home with their children. So things like coding robots, puzzles, a laminator, things like that. Our membership in the Noble Network allows our residents easy access to 24 libraries in the area, and that includes the Overdrive collection. And Beverly cardholders were ranked as the highest users of this collection every single month in the year so far. We average over 4,000 downloads per month in that part of the collection. Sitting before you tonight, I'm so happy to say that with the lifting of restrictions and having made so much progress in our community, our library is now open in a much more traditional way. The community can come in anytime they want to browse the stacks, use computers, or just sit and read and study. This proposed budget meets the minimum requirement for state certification. And I did want to say, as I prepared this budget, I was thinking a lot about 2019 and what it really takes to provide 68 hours of regular service in the main library, 53 hours at the Farms branch, and the Bookmobile being out on the road full time. And adding back all of the really valued services like in person programs, reservable meeting rooms, public computers, and of course, our continued collection, which we're always maintaining. So that's kind of my little spiel on the past year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? Council Hausmann.
Yeah, I'll just be really brief. I, I say this every year. I, I have a relative in assisted living here in, in Beverly. And she is an avid and regular user of the resources of the Bookmobile. And it makes all the difference in the world, in her world. So I, I think that is simply representative of the broader benefit of, of having a vibrant library system and sort of library of resources. So, you know, keep up the good work. It's great to see you. And I'll, I'll put it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hausmann.
Council Feldman.
Yes, thank you. Just kind of want to echo the same sentiments of Councilor Hausmann, but from the younger end of the spectrum. Because my children and I were very dependent on the pickup system at the library during the pandemic. And my son now is the only user of the Noble system in the household. He's creative, going on, can do everything by himself. So I'm just really grateful to the hard work the library did this last year and your staff because it really showed and it really made a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I say something?
All right, Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
Thanks so much. Everybody, it's really good to be here and listening in. I, I do want to say, all of our department has have done fantastic work this past year. Matt, Mary Ann, Lisa, Dan, Mark, who all went before this evening, our two chiefs, O'Connor and LaLasher, Bill Burke and Darling Nguyen, who are still to come this evening. Everybody's done fantastic work. I do want to especially say, Allison started as the director of the library in the middle of the shutdown. And a really tough way to get started, but she has been absolutely top notch and has done just wonderful work on behalf of our whole community. Her leadership within, you know, within the department has, has ensured that all of her, all of our Beverly Public Library staff have been well represented, have had their needs met the past year. And she is just doing fantastic work on behalf of all of us in the community. Want to make sure I say that tonight. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Here are no more questions or comments. I think, Allison, you're off the hook for tonight. Again, thank you for doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Absolutely. We're going to turn to Chief O'Connor. This is his first department as chief. Chief O'Connor.
Thank you all very much. This is a, a big change in us for our year. And I know you've probably reviewed the budget. This is exciting year for us. Just a little bit about us. So we've been pretty lean for, for quite a while. Since 2002, we've been running pretty much three, three apparatus. And we've been working for a few years now to try to get that fourth piece back. What that means to us is that we will actually run a ladder truck in the city for, for all intents and purposes, for full time, for the first time in a long while. So the budget required a little bit of work. What we've done in the past is we've had an overtime budget that's maintained itself or stayed about level for the better part of 10 or 15 years. And what that means is that staffing is a function of overtime, function, overtime is a function of staffing. They're very much interrelated. So what happens is with that money, what we would do is we would adjust our staffing levels from one day to the next to make sure that the overtime money made it through the year. We've worked very hard and I really appreciate all the help that we've had building this together. Because this was, this is, this is going to be a new year for us. It takes, it takes looking at a lot of historical data and a lot of projecting at what we expect to see over the next year to come up with these numbers. And Bryant Ailes has been phenomenal, helping me out. I've tortured him a lot over the last couple of months. And I really do appreciate all his help. But that's one of the biggest things. As you know, we do have a ladder truck on order. That, that ladder should be, I got some new pictures of it today. It should be in, in August, we're hoping. But it's, it's the, it's, it's getting us back into a place that we're, we're very, very comfortable or that we're, we're getting more comfortable. So it is a significant investment. There's a couple of things that you see the lines go up in particular this year. The first is we're in the last year of the safer green. For the last three years, we've had the federal government pick up a significant portion of four of our firefighters that runs out in December. This past year and through December, the, the federal government's picking up 35% of their costs. As of December, it goes up to 100% of the costs. The next line you'll see is the increase in the shift coverage line, which I'm sure we'll, we'll get to. But again, what that represents is us keeping that fourth piece in service all year round. The biggest change in what that again means to us is that we have a full time ladder truck that, that has people that do ladder company duties. It also means that we have an engine downtown that strictly does engine duties. This year, just looking at calendar, calendar year 2020, we had 94 fires. That's 94 fires of, of a bunch of different types. We did about 4,715 runs. We did about 4,715 runs. This calendar year so far, we're on pace, we're already 440 runs above where we were at this time last year. We're already three fires above where we were last year. I can tell you that the staffing makes all the difference in the world. Just recently, a couple of the fires that we've had, the Blaine Avenue fire, it was picture-perfect of how we want to operate on a fire ground. And the results of that fire were exactly what we would expect to see. Because the second new company was a ladder truck, they were able to get out, start doing ladder company work, while the next company in was another engine that was able to do engine work. Where in the past, without that extra piece, Truck One would have pulled up and had to be an engine company, would have delayed getting ladders up, which is a safety issue for the folks inside. And it would have run an issue as far as making sure, again, fire ground operations are slowed down, which is really, really important for us, to make sure things are going together. Everything on the fire ground has to be coordinated. Ventilation and water application are extremely, extremely important to time, especially in today's modern building construction. That's an older building. But the modern building contents, everything's burning so much faster and so much hotter than it ever did in the past. When we put people inside of a building, we got to make sure that when we're putting water in and we have that expansion of heat, that there's some place for that heat to go. And that's one of the huge roles of the ladder company on the fire ground. So again, I do want to take a second to say, you know, the people that work here were just phenomenal over the last year. It was a very difficult year. There's really no time off. This past year was one of the firsts that we truly saw the benefit of having the company in service all the time. Engine One was only out of service 25 days out of the last year. Going back to thinking about how that money was allocated, in fiscal '20, that truck was out of service more than 180 days. So it's a major, major difference that we're striving for here. And again, we put a lot of thought into that, the numbers that you see here, and we're trying to get to the right place and making sure, in the perfect world, that's going to be great for us. So I appreciate your consideration. I am certainly more than happy to answer any questions for you. I'll stop there. I know you've got a long night.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the rest of the councilors? Councilor Hausmann?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Yeah, thank you. I just have a quick question about maintenance and the role the DPS plays in maintenance, and how much sort of specialized maintenance there might be involved, and how well that works as a system that we now have for how the machinery is kept in good repair.
That's a great question. Thank you very much. As you all know, we had our own dedicated mechanic, Jack Morris, for a very long time. Jack was a phenomenal mechanic for us. And then when he retired, everything transitioned over to DPS. And in particular, Chuck Bullier and Frank have been just outstanding. They have really, really took to this, and they're just doing an outstanding job with the trucks. And man, I tell you, excuse me, sir, we put them to task this year. We have had a lot of issues with trucks that we did not foresee. Truck One is out right now. It's been out for three weeks. That's been a maintenance beast for us. But I can tell you that they have been, they have been there whenever we need them. I got an issue, we have a maintenance program, so when the guys find something wrong with the truck, they submit it, it basically sends an email to Chuck and Frank and one of our folks as well. And they said, within 10 minutes, without even a follow-up phone call, Chuck was up at the firehouse at North Beverly, looking at the truck fixing what he had to fix. It's been a tremendous, there was a lot of skepticism, myself included, about what that change was going to look like. But they have really, really stepped up and done a tremendous job, and I can't say enough about what they've done. The flip side of that, because it's not just about apparatus maintenance, is there's a lot of other things that Jack did on some equipment that we have here, maintaining self-contained breathing apparatus, maintaining the air machines that fill that apparatus. A lot of other things that we've kind of doled out. I have a great couple of maintenance folks that I rely on. Deputy Chief Petrazino tries to make sure that all that stuff is lined up. He's helped out tremendously by Lieutenant Chad McCormick. They really kind of make sure that the other side, the fire equipment side, not the apparatus side, they make sure that that equipment side is taken care of. Like I said, there's a lot of moving parts, and it's just amazing how much Jack did while he was here. And, you know, I was always impressed by Jack anyway, but when he left, it really, really showed you just how much he was doing here.
All right, thank you. Question, Councilor? Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. I'm glad to hear that that's working out. I know that transition was, you know, opened up some questions about how well it was going to work. So glad to hear that it's successful. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? For our first-year chief, you're getting off pretty good here, chief.
I guess so. Thank you very much, Councilor.
All right. I'm sure you'll be available for any other questions that we have, but again, appreciate all the work. Actually, I'd have a quick question. It's not necessarily budget-related. Bryant Ailes might be able to answer it. I've been always trying to figure out, as part of the capital improvements program, the idea of trying to fix up the fire station a little bit. Could you help with that? I know, like, one of my concerns have been, like, even the windows, the single-pane windows that, you know, the people live in on a daily basis. What's the status of that?
I'll let Bryant expand a little bit on it. I can tell you, we have had some of these conversations, and I look forward to continuing those conversations. There's been obviously some work done to the North Beverly Station. There's been some work done to the West Street Station. We've done a little bit. We've got a little bit of a new kitchen in the headquarters station, but the headquarters station is really the one that's going to need some attention over the next few years, I think. And I think we really have to look at what those options are. And again, I know that that discussion is starting to take place, and I guess I could let Bryant, I could let Finance Director Ailes kind of expand on that a little bit, but you're absolutely right. There are some real needs at this station. One thing I do want to say about that is, as far as locations go, this is just a tremendous location for a firehouse. And I know not everybody sees that, because it's in a residential area and stuff, but the truth is, when I pull out the doors here, you got Hale Street, Essex Street, Cavit Street. It's in basically the center of one of our most dense-run areas, so it does help for response times. The same thing could be said for our North Beverly Station. There's a lot of access from there. That being said, some of the limitations of the station are, we're building our trucks to the height of the open doors. That's a concern for us. I mean, unfortunately, the trucks, every year, they get taller and taller and taller. And as much as I'm not a fan for that, what happens is it does put constrictions on the apparatus cab, because when you build down, that's where you lose. So it does do some stuff to trucks when we're trying to build around that. But there are going to be some, there are some sizable costs associated with that. So it's definitely a discussion that we'll have to have. But again, I'll let Bryant expand a little more.
Yeah, I would just add that it certainly is a topic that we are right in the middle of discussing on a regular basis. Commissioner Collins is a big part of that conversation. I believe he and the mayor and Chief O'Connor and I have had numerous discussions about layouts, so some interior work that needs to be done there, as well as the exterior work that Commissioner Collins is already talking with engineers about designing certain components of that exterior work. I think the real timing issue on some of this stuff has to do with ultimately when we certify free cash, what other demands, or smaller-type demands might be kind of jockeying for some of that free cash money. But it's certainly within the future to begin to put resources towards this investment, because like Chief O'Connor said, it is a great location for a central firehouse. We want to make sure we maintain that asset so that it lives long beyond where we're all on these types of calls. So, I don't know, Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Chairman, I would just add, when Commissioner Collins comes in next week, let's ask it again, because he has had people there looking at the, you know, looking at the needs. And as Mr. Ailes and Chief said, it's something that's, you know, it's becoming much more right. We'll be talking a little bit more about it as we move ahead into the fiscal year and start looking at that free cash certification. I think there are things that can be done in the meantime, and then we'll be looking at, you know, trying to take some steps to make the improvements needed. And I do want to say, you know, I went open my mouth and said thanks to Allison for being a brand-new department head who started during the pandemic, but so did Chief. And as Ms. Nguyen gets up in a little while, so did she. So, boy, we've had a lot of people stepping in and having their first years be really under fire, as have several of you councilors, you know, who all got sworn in a month before, month and a half before everything changed. So it has been quite a time, and so many people have done incredible work, Chief included. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. Next up, we'll have Chief LaLasher from the Beverly Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. President, City Council, and Mr. Mayor. If you're looking at our budget, we're level service again this year. There have been some increases for inflation and some other testing we have to do for promotional processes through the year. Since March of 2020, our office has still responded approximately 18,000 calls for service. We were unable to work remotely, it's obviously part of our job. We had to go to the cars, we had to go to the houses, had to go to the car accidents, had to go to the medicals, and provide service to the citizens of Beverly. We also were tasked heavily with COVID compliance, going with the Health Department to the different stores, businesses, to make sure that the health agents were able to do their job without being harassed or interfered with at all. And that was a big part of what we did back in the early part of COVID. But I do obviously want to take the opportunity to thank the members of the Beverly Police Department, men and women, the hard-working men and women of the department, some very dangerous situations that they encountered during the year, providing great customer service on routine matters as well. And I think they've done a great job. Kind of some past things that we've talked about over the last few years. We have purchased and installed our brand-new radio system in the current station, which we moved to 175 LA Street next month. We've also actually also purchased our CAD system, it's something that's come up several years ago, and the money was put away into a separate account. We've made that purchase, and we're transitioning to that new system. Again, we'll make that move once we get into the new station, probably later this fall and early winter. It's a complex system to change over, knowing from a system we had first purchased in 1999 to this current system. As I stated, you know, we're certainly looking forward to the move next month. We're not sure about dates yet, but we're being told still that we are under budget and on time, and that we're looking to do a certificate of occupancy, I can never say that, the end of June, early July, and make our move after that. So we're very excited about that. I was there today, and we're actually putting furniture in the building. So I'm going to try to set up some tours. I know the last time some of you went there was on a scaffolding and metal stairs. So to get in this building now and see the changes in a year has been absolutely incredible. So I will reach out to all of you in the near future and try to get some of you into the building and do some tours. We have to do them after work ends for the day, so it's usually about 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So we're extremely, you know, grateful and looking forward to that from passage from the council to build this building, which is an incredible bit of history for the city. One thing I do want to talk about very briefly is something that I didn't want to interfere with Danny McPherson, but the Harbor Masters office in particularly, and a little bit animal control are going to be somewhat affected by the current police reform bill that went through. There are no more reserve offices. There'll be no more part-time academies. So he will not be able to hire any more part-time people that act as Harbor Masters during the summer. That's something that could significantly impact his budget next year, or even maybe towards the latter part of this year. He's not going to be able to hire part-time officers. There are no more part-time academies, only full-time police officers in the Commonwealth. People that are currently reserve officers, there is a process of building bridge academies to get them to full-time certification, but then they will all be full-time certified police officers, and then they go on to other jobs, whether it's here in Beverly or other municipalities. So it's something that could have a financial impact in the future. And we're going to have to keep an eye on that, and I've discussed that with the mayor and the sales on quite a few occasions. But that's where we're at. Again, I know we have a complicated budget, we have a lot going on. One thing that we're really working towards is, and hopefully the technology will change, is going with either electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles. There's only one company right now that has a pursuit-rated hybrid vehicle, but they've had some problems with it, and some of the vehicles being bought by other cities and towns have failed. So we don't want to make a purchase of a vehicle that's going to cost us more money to maintain. We've had Dodgers for quite a few years, and Dodgers are supposedly coming out with a hybrid SUV or a police-rated pursuit vehicle this year. Our intention is to hold off on any purchasing as long as we can. We've stretched the fleet in a pretty good scheduled manner so that we will hopefully be able to get those hybrids into service and then go with hybrid or electric as technology improves. But one thing that we are certainly going to do, and the mayor has been pioneer with this, and we've been certainly working with him, is getting some electric vehicles for non-pursuit positions. You know, a vehicle that's, you know, like a Tesla, which is maybe a little more money upfront, but we're also able to get grants to pay that down. The significance is the overall yearly cost to maintain that vehicle. I know my neighbor just bought a Tesla, the same type of vehicle we may be looking at. And to go from zero on hours run to 415 miles of run was about $7. Well, that'd have been about a $55, $60 gas bill. And so little things like that, there's less moving parts, there's no oil changes, so the maintenance on those will be significantly less. So maybe a little more upfront, but I think we'll save significantly in the future. I know the mayor is very, very adamant that we look at hybrids and electric vehicles in the future when we can do so. Thank you.
Chief, can you just go into that, the idea of not hiring part-time reserves? It's going to affect the Harbor Master. Can you, I know that happened this past year. Can you go into that a little bit and why?
Yeah, so it's also, it's going to affect us too. So we used to have, we used to hire from civil service, we would hire reserve officers. They would go to a part-time academy, nights and weekends would take a significant amount of time, but they would then become part-time certified. We would then put them through field training, interdepartmental training, to get them to be able to work in certain functions. And they could then replace officers who were taking vacation, maybe out injured, and again, save us a significant amount of money, paying somebody, you know, $30 an hour for a shift compared to $65 or $70 in an overtime to fill that position significantly. And then when we hired full-timers, we could get what was called a temporary waiver. We could hire them full-time. They could then work up to 270 days before they would have to go to the next police academy. So the rule is they would have to attend the next full-time police academy. There's no more waivers. So I have officers retiring in July, and then maybe some more in the future, early future. I cannot hire reserves to fill those full-time positions. I have to wait until the next police academy starts and put them through the full-time police academy. That's going to be a significant cost as we go down the run. But for the Harbor Master in particular, all of his offices, all of assistant Harbor Masters are reserve-certified. That's where they get their special police powers. There's no more reserve academies. Police reform has eliminated them under the post certificates. So we're going to have to have more full-time Harbor Masters, or we're going to have to take police officers on overtime or assignments and put them into those roles. Again, this is in the future, but eventually, they're going to have to be full-time certified police officers to have police powers on the waters.
Do you mind if I add one quick thing to that?
Go ahead, Mayor.
As the chief talks about, you know, the fact that we won't be able to get waivers for officers to work until there's a spot for them in the next academy, or the next academy that has an opening. What that is, what we've tried to do, and what this is something that we're going to have to continue to try to manage, and, you know, it impacts on the budget, is, you know, we try to anticipate retirements, but we can't always. And so each time you hire an officer, if we have to wait till there's a spot in that academy, that's where Chief says we could find ourselves shorthanded and then working, kind of burning through some overtime. Or we, you know, we try to, we hire early and we carry more positions than, you know, than the budget currently calls for. You know, get somebody new in academy in anticipation of a retirement that may happen later that year or the next year. So these are the kind of things that we've been trying to manage, but that ability So these are the kind of things that we've been trying to manage, but that ability for an officer to serve, you know, fill a patrol position and cover shifts before going to the academy, that going away means that management of the, you know, the overall staffing of the department just may get more costly at various points in time.
Apparently, we have two offices in the full-time academy, they're up in Redding. The next academies will not start until September, so even if someone retires in July, I cannot hire somebody until September. So now we'll be three positions down until the two graduate from the current academy, which will be in October, and then we'll be able to add, you know, another position from there.
Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Let's see, can you hear me? You can? Okay, cool. Sorry, my computer's lagging. I can't wait to be back in Council chambers very soon now. So thank you, Chief, for being here tonight and giving, you know, your update and informing us of this new change that's coming. I have a couple questions. One, on the line item that's on page 51, it's 51109 under the lieutenant line item. I'm just curious, is that increase due to promotion?
If you remember back, I believe in December, we came to the council and asked for an additional patrol position, lieutenant's position. Lieutenant's position is to handle all licensing, so firearms licensing, liquor licensing, soon-to-be marijuana, which is going to be before license, a lot of work in getting those establishments done. And then also doing, we've taken some of the other burdens off other superiors, and he's also being tasked with internal affairs investigations. So because of, we were spending quite an amount of time on firearms licensing, and I know you've probably seen in the news that the increase in request for license to carry in firearm purchases, that's affected us, because now, you know, we have, I believe there's like 5,000 firearms permits in the city between firearms identification cards and licenses to carry. So they rotate every so many years, so we're doing about 1,500 to 2,000 a year, and one person has to do all those 360, 280 day a year. So it's a tremendous amount of work, and again, very thankful to the council for giving us those positions. And a lot of that, also, some of that money we will recuperate, because of some of the things that we do, that person does, there's fees that go along with it, fingerprinting of licenses and so forth, some of that money will be able to recuperate.
Okay, that's great. And then my other question, which might be, I'd like to ask for a breakdown of the overtime line item of, just really, I've always been really fascinated and curious about how the overtime is managed in the police department, even after, I don't know, eight times doing this, it's still, I'm still learning so much about how police departments operate. And so that might not be something you can provide for me today, but I'd love to see kind of a breakdown of, is the overtime being used to cover vacations, or, you know, sick days, personal days? Is it being used to cover events? Is it just, does it, is it being used just because of the number, our numbers in the police force? And is that overtime being spread out across the department and across ranks? I just, I'm curious about that, and I think going into the new building and the change over to civilian dispatch, I think it would be really great to just have a sense of where that overtime is being applied.
So the easy answer to your questions is yes. Only above. So we have contractual obligations, so as the year goes along, we are now in what's called prime time, Memorial Day to Labor Day. Under the union contract, four officers per shift can request time off. To man the department at full strength is eight officers, two inside and six in the row, and then not counting OIC and officer in charge and a patrol supervisor. So if, on a Friday night, we say a 4 to 12 shift on a Friday night, we want to have all six B cars filled, for obvious reasons. Every neighborhood, you know, wants a police car in their neighborhood. So we may have to hire four overtimes to cover vacation, comp time, costs, things like that. So yes, a lot of it is contractual obligations, some of it is major crimes, you know, homicide back in March of 2020, that's going to take up a lot of overtime. There's a lot of, a lot of work that goes into homicide investigation, major traffic collisions, where we have to bring people out and do things to that effect, other major crime investigations. But a majority of the, majority of the overtime is filling vacancies in patrols and superior positions. And, you know, I would say the analogy, if you live in Beverly Farms, and there's no car in the six B, and your child is choking, you know, the fire department has a tremendous response time, but the cruisers are in the neighborhoods, and we usually get there first. So to have the cruisers in the neighborhoods, you know, we get there usually in a much more rapid rate, the officers are all trained in first responder techniques, and we try to, you know, keep the situation under control till fire and the medics get there. So if we only have, you know, a car, five cars working, some part of the city is being double covered. And the mayor and I have had many of these conversations, making sure everyone had a cruiser. One thing I can say, Counsel, and I think we've had this conversation, because your rookie year was my rookie year, and, you know, I remember back, and some of the councils were on prior, obviously, the president and Council Clarity, and probably Council Housman, the police department used to come to the city council every March and ask for $100,000, $200,000 extra money to fill the overtime budget. I have never come in front of the council and asked for another dime outside the budget, outside other increases that have to happen, we've always been able to manage that budget.
Yeah, I remember that shift, and I think that's a great budget practice that you and this administration has put into effect. I think it's really helpful in kind of planning and also just good relationships between the police department and the council. Is there, I'm sure you have, like, very clear records of the overtime? Just for my own kind of a visual effect, if it's possible to see it, I'm going to pull one out of Counselor Ames's book, if it's possible to see it in a spreadsheet, it would be really amazing for me to be able to look at that. I don't know if that's a tall order between now and next week, but I would love that, or just however you organize that information.
I can certainly check with the payroll clerk, and there are numerous codes that go into the budget as far as overtime, you know, whether it's patrol coverage, whether it's city overtime, it's called city overtime. Special events come under the community policing budget, so that's a different line in the current budget.
Okay, I really appreciate that. And then my other question or comment that you kind of reminded me of is that I understand there are six vehicles out on the road at any, or at any given time, or at least that's the goal, and I guess I'm just going to kind of make a nudge or ask my question of, if there is a concentration of need in Ward Two and Ward Three, then why don't we have a little more of a concentration of coverage?
Well, you do it a way because the beats are much smaller. So Ward Two and Ward Three are much smaller than Four, Five, and Six, and One, I mean, all rouse side is one beat. But what you're also getting is, don't forget, the community impact officers are working, the traffic units are working, I mean, my guys know I'm not stopping cars a lot in active going to calls. So even though there's the six wards, the six B cars, there's always other officers out there. And we, one of the things we've talked about, I think I've talked about it before, and now the things have kind of opened up, is having, you know, maybe putting on some walking beats, taking some of our community policing money and putting up bike patrols. It's like tomorrow night, I actually have two bike patrols up, having work in the beaches because of what just found the turn. And that's taking money out of another one of the budget that we have in there for that and utilizing high-profile patrols, yes.
That's a great idea, I'll keep my eye on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Council Clarity. Chief, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done over the pandemic, especially, I know every time I've called the community impact unit yourself, I mean, guys, even Apple Village, I want to acknowledge the work that you've been really doing, especially during the pandemic. Besides that, there is one big question, and I think this might be more geared towards as well to the budget, I'm sorry, to Brian Ailes and the mayor, it's the new dispatch center. Can we just get a little briefing? I know there's a new budget line in for that, and I know that's still in progress of working, but maybe just a brief description of how it's going to look? I think this kind of, I know it's, you know, it's geared for the fall, I know there's a lot of moving parts with this, but maybe just a quick explanation, if possible?
The quick explanation is this, we've posted the position for the dispatch supervisor that is out there, very, very short period of time, I believe we'll start going through the applications and looking at bringing somebody on, but there are some labor issues that are still being worked through, and that has to be, you know, something that we have to deal with before we bring in civilians. But in the, hopefully, near future, and I know we're certainly working on it, is to have the combined police-fire dispatch in the new police station. We are building it out for that, there's four consoles that are going to be in the building. You'll have one full-time fire dispatcher, one full-time police dispatcher, the fire dispatcher will answer, the deputy chief on call, the police dispatcher will answer to the police OIC in charge, and obviously, they'll work in conjunction, we work extremely well together. I am so happy with the relationship we have with the fire department and the city. And we'll have a houseman in there to handle walking calls and answer phones and do other things, but there's still some labor issues to be worked through, but that's the goal. And again, once we work into this new computer-rated dispatch and wreckage management system in November, December, we're hoping to make the move shortly, either there or thereafter.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'm sorry, too, that'll also loosen up 4.5 police officers, 4.5 is to cover 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they'll be able to be used in other functions in uniform for detectives.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that, you know, when Chief mentions the four and a half positions, and as he said, that really breaks out to one officer all the time, you know, over the course of every shift in a week. That's, you know, that's where, when Chief talked about fully staffed, you've got to have eight officers, because you've got six patrol cars, and you've got the houseman position and the dispatch position. And when that dispatch officer is freed up from dispatch, that will help us with staffing on all shifts. And, you know, with the supervisor position being, you know, currently advertised, and the hope is to get somebody on board during the course of the summer, as Chief said, the new CAD system will be in, coming in this fall, it's a question of getting the supervisor on and then hiring up the other civilian positions and getting everybody trained over the course of that time. Our goal is to have, you know, we'll see if we get there, but the goal certainly is to be transitioned over to civilian combined or consolidated, whatever the right term is, dispatch by second half of the fiscal year.
Okay. Counsel Flowers?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief, for being here and presenting to us about your budget. I had one specific question about a line item and then sort of a broader question, if I may. I was curious if you could just help us, or help me, understand a little bit more about the line item 53003 on page 54, the accreditation line item? Just if you could, just help me understand if that's connected to shifting to the new station or different types of training that you're doing with officers, what the increase there is coming from?
So part of, what we've tried to do is become an accredited agency within the Commonwealth, but also part of police reform mandates a certain standard for every police department within the Commonwealth. So we've been, as you know, been rewriting a lot of policies, we, you know, the current police station will not pass accreditation standards, it fails in just about every way, and the new station will pass every standard. As a matter of fact, we have the Department of Public Health coming in to do a cell inspection next week, and they'll sign off on that. But it's a best standards practice accreditation, there's two sets, there's a national accreditation, there's a state accreditation. We are in what's called self-assessment right now. There are 52 parts to become certified, and then there's 52 policies, like 152 different standards to become accredited, I'm sorry, certified agency, and there's 83 policies and I think 222 standards to become an accredited agency. It's our goal, and we want to be an accredited agency. It helps us with our insurance carrier, it helps us with its best practices. And one of the things I've talked about specifically with accreditation is, we're part of Nemwic, the Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. I have offices that respond all over Middlesex and Essex County, and we've actually even gone into Boston to help them for different things. When the last walk call, I think, that we went to was up in Lowell, and, you know, my offices go, our offices go up there, and I want them to perform under the same standards that Lowell Police do in other parts of other Nemwic communities. So it's extremely important that everybody has the same policies and everybody's on the same, you know, page, piece of paper as we're doing these type of calls. And even just the mutual aid, if I bring in, you know, the town of Wyndham offices to back us up for something, I want to make sure their offices are trained to the standards of our offices.
Thank you. I thought that's what that line item was tied to, but I just wanted to sort of check my own understanding, so thank you. My broader question is around the idea of just sort of looking towards the future with your budget and what you see on the horizon. So I'm curious to just think a little bit with you about, you know, after the shift is made to the new police station, which, you know, I'm also excited to see when it's not just scaffolding. And I'm curious about ways that, you know, I know we have the social worker that we are able to have dedicated through a grant, but I've been sort of watching with interest in Denver, their STAR response team that they put in place, where they're sending out trained mental health workers on some calls that police would have had to handle in the past. And so I was interested, I've been kind of watching to see what the result of that would be, and I'm sure you and other departments are as well. So I noticed that after six months, that team had responded to 750 calls, and so were able to do those and provide sort of mental health or addiction support, which officers would have previously been working on, but were able to do that, and they weren't calls that ended up needing police, traditional sort of policing, or even arrests in most, in all those cases, I think. So it strikes me that then that also relieves pressure and stress on officers, and then officers can be focused on more of the work that they're really trained for and focusing on. And I want to say, I think our community impact officers especially do an incredible job responding to these kind of calls. I'm sort of thinking about how we can partner and do better in terms of supporting you and your officers, and so do you have any thoughts about trying to expand our ability to have more dedicated social workers, licensed mental health providers that could work with your department? Is that something that you see in the future as we shift to the new station, especially with more space and more training capability?
No, Counsel, thank you for the question. And I did forget to mention this, we've actually been working with Ms. Barrett on a second clinician for the six cities and towns that we deal with, and we have received grants from the Department of Public Health of a second clinician. So our joint diversion clinician will just do Beverly and Ipswich, and basically only Ipswich when needed. And the calls you're speaking about, that a lot of these clinicians are going to are very low-grade type vetted calls, and there was a clinician that went to a call in Seattle and was killed, there was a clinician that went on a call in Newton recently and was almost stabbed, the officer decided to save the clinician. Most clinicians will not go to calls by themselves, they want to have police backup. We actually get calls every day from the various mental health providers in the area that they want police officers with them because they understand that the clients that they're dealing with have been very assaultive in the past. Not to say that there won't be cases that we can vet out, I think that's something we'll have to look at. And also, we have our domestic violence coordinator, Ms. Spires, who has just completed a second degree, she's been working with Ms. McCarroll, and I think that she's been She's been working with Ms. McCarron, and I think that she's going to be able to assist, if needed, on, on the, on the, the mental health cases, jail diversion cases. So that's something we're certainly looking at, and we want to make sure that the, the civilians that go out to these calls, they're vetted, you know, really vetted, and we know exactly what the issues are. And I know there was a well-being check that I, I just, just read an article on. A simple well-being check that two deputy sheriffs in California went to and came under fire. It just happened in New York City also, where they were helping a woman on, after restraining her, just going to a house to take out some things. The husband was, or ex-husband was supposed to be out in the area. He came back and shot one of the officers in the back and shot the, the woman. And so, I mean, they, they can be very dangerous calls, and, and we have to be very careful on, you know, the intelligence we get and how the calls come in. But it's something that we are certainly going to look at.
Thank you. And I, I thank you for mentioning Ms. Spires and her work, too. I should, I should have said, you know, as I was mentioning, your social work professionals. I think we're so fortunate to have her in our, you know, in our city and working with the department. So thank you for reminding me that I think she's such an important part of the work that gets done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Feldman?
Thank you. And yes, thank you, Chief Lilaisher, for being here and for all of your hard work during this really tumultuous last year. Your team has done outstanding work, and I really enjoyed getting to know you and some of the officers over the last year or so. I have one question. Well, I had two, but Counselor Flowers already asked my, the prior question about the accreditation. So the, my other question was regarding item 1210151340 on page 52, the community. The fluctuation, is that due to a lot of community events over the last year, not? Is, is that COVID-related, the, in terms of events and what you're at and homecoming and those type of things?
Yes, so, oh, we ended up canceling, you know, Halloween was canceled, the Halloween event we do. A lot of other of the community events that we do were canceled where we would take money out of community line. But also, we felt particularly is to, is to engage more with the community. And to be able to do that, I have to have, you know, get offices in, in the community, working hand in hand with our citizens and neighborhoods. And so we felt it was important to bring that line back, back to historically where it had been in the past. We, we purposely cut it last year, coming into the, coming into the budget cycle, because we knew that, you know, there was no Memorial Day parade, there was no holiday parade. Some of it is, is funded by the regions, you know, other entities, but a lot of it is still, we have to cover. You know, different things come up all the time that we cover that we knew we weren't going to be doing, so we cut that line way back.
Is that line now, is it more on par with, I don't have all the data in front of me, something saved from two or three years ago? Or is it more than that in, in an effort to bring community events back?
No, it's, it's in line. I, I know Mr. Ailes usually has the, the years, two dates, but I think that we used to do 30 or 35,000, and we've cut it, we've cut it back to a level we think is, is reasonable. Because I think maybe in 18 and 19, we may not have spent at all. We ended up transferring to different lines. So I think that historically, what we should, this is where we should be. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, the FY19 level, we spent just over $44,000. FY18, we spent about 29, and that 29 level was historically kind of the norm.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Houseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. Good to see you. I guess my, my question really has been covered sort of tangentially by a lot of different kinds of conversations you've had with other councilors, particularly with Councilor Flowers. But I, I, I still want to follow up on one slice of my question, which is, I had a conversation recently about how, when a call comes in to dispatch, the dispatcher determines the nature of the call and what they do with it in terms of sort of categorizing it, and this speaks as much probably to my unfamiliarity with policing as much as anything else. But the, the issue of, of a mental health issue versus a, let's just say, obviously more violent issue, okay? A, a more, more clear-cut issue, if you will. And while you and Councilor Flowers have covered a lot of that territory, I guess I'd like to focus in on the accreditation and training of the dispatch aspect of, of that kind of a response. What kind of training do the dispatchers get? Is it not really relevant? I mean, sort of given your conversation to Councilor, or response to Councilor Flowers, it sort of suggests that that public safety necessity of, of an officer is always going to be there, if I understand what you're saying correctly. So if you could just sort of speak more on the dispatch side of that conversation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for the question again. And, and as Councilor Flowers stated, and I agree with it, there may be calls in the future that, and we do vet out calls now, that we may get a call for, you know, an ongoing issue with somebody that I will give right to Ms. McCarron, and, and she'll do follow-up on it. So we, we may not send, you know, officers to the house. But if we get a call for a, you know, an alarm at a residence or business, if we get a call for a fighting protest, if we get a call for, you know, a domestic or a loud party, we're always going to send two or three officers, depending on the situation. And sometimes officers get there and things go sideways, and, and it's happened last Saturday. And some of the councils know, we had to have saw six cars there for, for a situation that really went out of control. We had an incident on Bow Street back a few months ago where it was a simple, it started, someone was a simple call and turned into a woman with a knife threatening to stab, stab everybody on Bow Street. And when the officer got there, that woman confronted the officer and challenged him at knife point with two knives. And we all went. I mean, I was halfway home, and I turned around and shot back. And the officer did an incredible job of de-escalating the situation and rectified it. And there was a, there was an individual that needed some, some mental health, you know, care. And so those do happen, but we may get a call for a hit-and-run property damage where one officer will go. One of the things that we are working on, and we're hoping to do the new CAD system, and this does go to that, is there are certain crimes or past crimes, you know, mailbox damage, property damage action without, without any witnesses or evidence. The fraud cases that we get, you know, the, the unemployment fraud cases, where they could literally go on our website and fill out a form, get assigned a case number, put enough information in there, we can do a quick follow-up on it, not have to send a police officer to the house, which would also free up offices to do more patrol and interact with the public. So there are a lot of newer technologies that we're going to get into with the new equipment we're buying to be able to do, to do things like that. But there is a specific dispatch policy, there are prioritization of calls. So if a, again, if a call comes in for a suspicious person looking in windows, we're all, we're all, you know, we're always going to send the two closest cruises to that call. It could be, like I said, a, a past tense harassing phone call, so maybe one officer will go because there's only one person, there's, there's not a possible confrontation. So they, the calls are vetted and they are dispatched according to priority. And there are times when officers send the calls, and then something more serious comes in, and they're rerouted to another call.
So, so I guess I'm not sure you answered my question in terms of what kind of training do dispatchers get? So policemen go to the police academy, a police go to a police academy. What kind of training does a dispatcher get? And, and in what way does that function of the dispatcher have an impact on or control what the response is there? So it's, it's that sort of question, and it relates to the accreditation piece as well, sort of all folded together?
No, no, absolutely. So they will go through a 40-hour 911 program. State 911 runs a 40-hour course for new dispatchers. They'll have to go through that, you know, and that, that teaches not only to use the equipment, but again, how to prioritize calls, how to handle text message calls, because we can receive text messages now. If you're in a position where you can't speak, you can text to 911, you know, in an emergency, you're being trapped, or you don't want people to hear you, you know, or you're, you know, something's going on where you don't want to have a phone call, you can send a text to 911. They have to be trained how to, how to handle those calls and answer the people back. So that's, that's, that's a 40-hour program. They'll also go through a, another certification program, which it's APCO, I forget the, the, the definition of it. APCO certification of dispatchers. There's also going to be the, the state and federal CEGIS training for, you know, certification and how to run the, the computer that checks on wanted persons, motor vehicle records, all that. That, there's a certification program, you have to go through that. So there's extensive training, in-service training and training that they'll have to go through. It's also working with senior people on how to deal with, you know, the customer service end of phone calls. One of the things we've actually worked on with our, our current offices, and I think we've done a great job, is the regular customer service of when people call in. When a person calls the police station, it can be the worst day of their life. Sometimes for the 911 dispatcher, for the police officer, routine call. But they have to have empathy in their call and understand it could be the worst day. It could be a minor fender bender accident, and the person's never had that before. And it's, but to them, it's, it's the worst thing they've ever dealt with. And we have to keep training our people to a customer service level to handle those types of calls. But there is extensive training. There's, there's policy that has to be put in place. They have to follow the policy. And then there's also different types of in-service and other types of training that they have to go through. And then yearly continuous education training.
So, and, and so the accreditation line item is what's used to pay for that training for the dispatchers? Or do they handle that on their own, and they, they, they can't, they can't apply for the job unless they've already got it in the bag?
No, some, well, some of it, some of them may already have it, and we will look at applications when they come in to, to train them in that. I mean, just to run the, the CAD system and the RMS system could take one or two weeks of training. It's a, it's a very in-depth computer program. So the in-service training, once we hire people, is, is, it's, it's not a one-day, sit in the chair and start working the desk. It's, it's, it's an intense training program. When we hire new officers, they start, you know, sitting in dispatch. They go through a lot of training with another officer to, to learn how to handle these type of things. So it's, it's, it's a, some, some of them, we hope to hire people that already have experience so that we don't have to do a lot of that. But the, the accreditation part of it is for the, there's a fee to be part of accreditation. I think, I think it's $1,500 yearly, just to be part of the accreditation process. And then there's a $900 book we have to buy every year with the standards, because the standards sometimes change every year. So that's a lot of that accreditation in the budget, is that, those are the fees. And then the accreditation officer, who is, also shares the prosecutor's position, will have to have some additional training to make sure that he's keeping up with all the policies that are in place.
I, I, I'm mindful, as having been formerly Chair of Finance and Property, that Councilor Flaherty has a, has a timeframe to keep, so I, I don't want to belabor the point. I, I am interested in finding out, maybe I can touch base with Mr. Ailes offline about sort of where the cost is covered for that kind of a training in, in your, in your budget. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and again, once the, once the dispatch line comes into my budget for the nine people, the nine full-time, or the nine, the part-time and full-time people, the overtime that covers that and training will come out of probably my training overtime.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief, for all of this really wonderful detailed information. Yeah, it's just about the scariest thing you could, you can imagine, and I saw it firsthand Saturday morning at 8:30. You know, the entire, every on-duty police officer, you know, and at a situation. And your team certainly are very serious and dedicated to the job. But I just wanted to give my annual pitch for the Community Impact Unit. I think I just left Gage Street at 5:00. I'm there, you know, with Sergeant Costa almost every Wednesday afternoon. And the work those folks do in the community is priceless. And I think they build trust. And the more of that we can get, along with Cindy Spires's work and the social workers' work, I think worth their weight in gold. So thank you for all of them.
No, thank you, Councilor. And our, our goal, and the mayor and I have talked about this also, is when we have the ability to do so, is add to the Community Impact Unit. You know, they, they work days and nights now. I'd love to have somebody all the time in the day shift and all the time on the night shift. And, and, you know, this question used to come up a lot, you know, in prior councils, and I always make the point that, you know, Beverly's population is about the same size as Salem. Salem may be a little bigger. They have 99 police officers, we have 71. We do, we, we do, I think we do a tremendous job with the amount of people we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you coming in. You've done a great job, and as some of the other councilors have mentioned, especially during this pandemic and all the things you had to go through. Greatly appreciate not only your leadership, but all your people in your department who have done a great job. So thank you, thank you for the, your professionalism and for your fellow officers. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you for your service, and the president wants you as well.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you. We're going to move on to Darlene Nguyen, who's been very patient sitting here. She's the Director of Planning and Community Development. Darlene, glad you're still with us.
I've been hopping back in and out. I will miss remote meetings because I can't say goodnight to my kids and then come back to the meeting. But, you know, it's a nice advantage. So thank you, Chairman, for having me, and thank you to the council. As the mayor said, yeah, this is a, my, this was my first full year. Although I was here with my budget last year, I was really just getting my feet wet. I know I've worked with, with each of you on the council, but just as a kind of refresher, the planning department really consists of five, seven sub-areas, planning and zoning, conservation and environment, open space, historic preservation, housing and community development, economic development, parking, traffic and transportation. And within that, we do, you know, a lot of little things. I have seven staff, two administrative and, and five technical professionals, as I call them. And I'm very pleased that in the last year, two of my professional staff received their, their certified, certification credentials as American Institute of Certified Planners, AICP. And additionally, Chelsea, who's our newest hire, just recently passed the exam. And according to Jocelyn, it's one of the most popular social media posts that she's posted so far, which is great. And so Chelsea is halfway there. She just needs to accrue her, her professional experience before she can get her credential. And so with that, that makes four of us that have our AICP, which is really great. And I, I can't take any credit for them passing that exam. They did all the work on their own. But, you know, I'm really grateful to have that kind of high level of caliber of employees working for me and for the city. Together, we all staff 10 boards and commissions. And, you know, in addition to what I mentioned before, that includes, we've just kind of, we're taking a partial role back for the harbor management authority and trying to work on policy issues down there that relate to the harbor, to the harbor. And I think the other one, design review board, which falls under the planning. Our daily activities can fall into these five categories, is how I see it. We do development and permit review, which takes up a lot of, you know, our, kind of our day-to-day stuff. Long-range planning, short-term projects such as grants and implementing, implementing small projects within the year. Maintenance and enforcement of permits and approvals, which is also a big part of some of our daily duties, as well as customer service. And I just want to say that particularly my two administrative staff and all of us think customer service and public service is just really important, and they do an excellent job. And it's been hard this year to do it remotely. But they really take pride in their work, and I want to commend them for the job that they've done to continue to provide a high level of community service. Sometimes the planning department kind of becomes a triage unit. I consider it where, not to, not to take a hospital, a medical term, but people don't know where to call, so they call us. And my staff does a really good job redirecting people or trying to help solve problems and answer questions. So, you know, essentially, this is, this is really a level budget for us. There are a couple real minor changes I just wanted to point out. Overtime is one of them, where it went up a little bit. I'll note that I think- it went up a little bit. Um, I'll note that I think, I think, um, Commissioner Fredrickson mentioned it last night, but it seems like everybody's home for the pin, during the pandemic and they want to do work on their house. Uh, Conservation Commission permits, we have a lot of wetlands in Bos, uh, in Boston and Beverly. Um, in 2020, conservation uh, filings were up 40% over the prior year. Uh, we are now, in May, at the end of May, we were at the same level of, of permit applications in 2021 that we were for all of 2020. So, um, you know, Jenna has been working incredibly hard and all of those applications require site visits, um, often inspections, um, and after the fact and, um, follow-up meetings and then paperwork. And so, um, that's one reason why we have, um, you'll see a slightly higher overtime budget in the future year. Um, the other one is reporting secretary line. You know, for a long time, we've had, we've struggled with getting recording secretaries who want to stay on. Um, and it's really important to have a great recording secretary. As I said, we have 10 boards and commissions that we support. So we've proposed to, um, increase the hourly pay rate. Uh, we pay recording secretaries for hours of the meeting. So it's $45 per hour is what we're proposing for the meeting time. And then they have to kind of finalize and revise their minutes within that. Um, I've, I've researched it across the board. Every community does it differently, but that seems like, uh, a standard that's been comfortable for us. And so I'm hoping that, um, that will help quality, um, candidates stay with us and, and recognize the work of the can, the people that we have and, and future candidates. Um, and so, you know, in line with that, we've, you know, I think our consulting line is a little bit smaller this year. We get a lot of grants, um, that we are lucky to have and a lot of technical assistance from, um, different entities. Uh, we're doing a couple of different projects with some technical assistance and also a number of different grants. And so that has enabled us, um, to stay busy and will keep us busy throughout the next year. Um, and I think with the consulting line, we still would like to use that for projects like zoning changes, particularly implementing some of the recommendations from the master plan, uh, the preservation plan or our, you know, soon-to-be-completed climate action plan. So, um, it's nice to have that also just in case projects come up or we need a match for a grant that comes up at the last minute. Um, so that's what we would use our consulting line for. Um, and I think that was kind of my brief intro. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them. Thank you for having me here.
Yeah. All, every single council wants to ask you a question. So let's, um, Councilor Rand.
Thank you. This is more just a comment for you, Ms. Nguyen. Your whole department is just, um, doing so much. And I know you've, you have more people there now, but I'm still just completely amazed by how many planning processes you've undertaken in the past year and completed and been successful at. And just the amount of planning that you're moving forward in this city is unbelievable. Um, and a lot of it's really fun. And I feel like we're kind of, the processes you're undertaking are really, um, with the administration are really moving Beverly into some, into a very present-minded mode with things like sustainability and planning for, you know, preserving our resources on the waterfront, things like that. So I'm just really appreciative of the work you're doing and your team, um, enjoying working with all of you. And I, and I have now my mind thinks in terms of planning. And when I, when I'm thinking about a new initiative, I'm gonna just, you know, look for other communities that have had a planning process leading up to it. So, um, hopefully I can connect with you about, um, what other communities might be doing that involve planning processes that include our, um, young adults, like 13 to 20-year-olds. I'm really interested in seeing what, what kind of, if there are planning initiatives that connect with that age group to help, um, help that age group feel connected to community and not so kind of marginalized because of their just stage of life. So, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, thank you for your, for your praise and thank you for, for that suggestion. We, I can, I'm happy to talk to you about that. There's some things that we have done. Um, and I can tell you how, how successful or not they were. And I definitely think looking at other opportunities to ma, make them a little bit more successful, um, is certainly welcome. We love, you know, they're the, they are the future of Beverly and we want them to feel invested and, and to help set, you know, what the community's going to look like. So.
Well, so Rattundo.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Uh, Ms. Nguyen, I just want to thank you. I, I feel every time I call you from, I come with you at different angles for different projects, whether it's the, um, Keta Bus right now, or even Hobbit Management, it seems I'm constantly, I feel guilty every time I send an email or a text to you or I call you and last week you were, had a, an injury and you still responded to me and I appreciate that, even though, uh, you didn't have to. So I just want to really just thank you for all the work you have done. Your office, you know, customer service, you're right. You guys are great with customer service. Um, you know, Cindy and Jennifer, whenever there's an issue, they call me immediately, say, hey, listen, just so you know, maybe you want to check in on this. So I just want to really commend your whole office. And, um, you know, Chelsea is definitely a, uh, sparkle in the office right now. She's definitely a bright smile. So again, thank you for everything you've done. And, uh, that's all. I just want to thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Councilor Rattundo, for being that great word, Counselor. So the at-large councils don't have to call us department heads as much as you do. Um, any other councils, um, have any questions? Darlene, look at that.
How is that possible? It must be me.
One council asked you a question. So, um, thank you for your patience and, uh, for doing a good job.
Yeah, thank you all.
We're going to move on to, uh, Bill Burke, and I'll be with us tonight. Um, so representing him will be the mayor, um, and Brian Ailes. So, um, do your best impression of Bill Burke, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Burke couldn't be here tonight. Um, so Mr. Doig is still here. Yes, he is, as the, uh, Community Services Director, to whom Bill reports directly, um, and Mr. Ailes and I. So we're, we're all just here to answer any questions you have on the, on the health budget.
Any councils have any questions on the health budget? Councilor Ames, you're usually pretty good on this. Go right ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, gentlemen. I just was, um, wondering about, um, an overview because obviously you've just been through a whale of a year. And there's a lot going on. So I, um, was wondering what, uh, in terms budgetarily, what you thought normalcy was. And also, Mr. Mayor, you and I have worked on, um, a bunch of projects where, um, whether it is, where, where public health and how people live have sort of intersected in kind of negative ways and had sort of adverse impacts on a neighborhood. Is that a fair way to put it?
Sure, sure.
And so I was just wondering where you saw the Health Department's role moving forward because, you know, things just do change and we always try to take a look at what we do. And after last year, we certainly do that and try to do it a little better. And so I was wondering, um, if you saw areas for investment or, or just, uh, talent building or anything like that, 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 uh, where the Health Department, um, could take the lead. Because they certainly had to do a lot that was different, that wasn't anticipated.
Now, that, now you, Counselor, you're absolutely right. Uh, let me share, share a few thoughts and then maybe Mr. Ailes, um, or Mr. Doig can, can elaborate as well. Um, you know, there were, we were just talking about this earlier today. Um, you know, with CARES funds and FEMA reimbursement availability and now ARPA funds, our Health Department is, has been really kind of, uh, and they've been, they've been at the front line, right? Of, of, in all ways. I mean, we have other departments for sure. Both our Public Safety Departments, uh, Public Services, um, but without a doubt, health has been really, really taxed. And, you know, we, we're staffed in a way that works in the normal time. Um, we have a director, a full-time public health nurse, two full-time inspectors. Um, I think we're going to be looking at, you know, at some of the functions as we get past COVID. Um, we also are looking at, you know, things that they had to do this, this year that they'd never done. I mean, they have the, you know, they, they're involved with restaurants. They're involved with, uh, summer camps. They're involved with a number of things. Um, but this year, they had to get involved with all the shutdown and then all the reopening in, in sectors of our local economy that they've never had a, a role in before. Um, it, it fell to Departments of Health to be that, uh, you know, to be that, um, fill that inspector role that, you know, that guidance, that taking, taking state sect, sector, uh, sorry, sector-specific guidelines, mouthful, and, and, you know, trying to help, uh, interpret that and help our diff, our business community understand. So there's a lot for them there. The public health nurse role, which Teresa Kirsch, Kirsch fills admirably. Um, you know, all of a sudden, she was used to contact tracing for flu, for something that may pop up that wasn't expected. But now contact tracing became this all-encompassing tidal wave of work, um, that, you know, no, no number of people could do, let alone one. Um, fortunately, the resources that came our way, right, to help, came quickly. So we were able to hire on, um, a halftime inspector position to add to the two inspectors. We were able to hire on several part-time, uh, nursing positions, um, to help the public health nurse. For, you know, we, we had the, um, we had the, the school nurses help through the summer and then they, they went back to school. Uh, and we had several other part-time who have come on and, and some are still, you know, still with us. So, and, and we also know that, well, I shouldn't say we know, we could well see, uh, an increased need for contact tracing again in the fall and winter. We don't see so much right now. Um, but that same, that same resource of public health nurse and nurses has been desperately needed to help with all the vaccination clinics in Beverly and throughout the region. Uh, so there's a lot that, that comes in there. Um, and I, I think, you know, more than, I'm, I'm kind of running out of thoughts here. Um, so I'll, I'll stop except to say that, you know, Dave Goodwin, Joe Reale, the inspectors, Teresa Kirsch, the nurse, Bill, the director, they are all fantastic people. And they've been, been just, you know, gone above and beyond. And it's really, you know, very, I, I'm, I'm not sure, there aren't many who've worked as hard, for sure, and have had as much on their.
I, I completely, um, appreciate your thoughts. I totally appreciate their, their effort. Um, and I think, you know, with a little perspective, you know, looking back at what we've all gone through, um, one of the things that I've sort of picked up on is just, and, and I think this opportunity with these federal dollars coming in is really important. And I hope that you make us a serious part of the conversation. And one of the places where I think we can support each other, especially within government, is sort of the understanding of how important health is across the board to all of us. So we had the Police Department here, the Fire Department, you know, last night was Steve Fredrickson, this Health Department. When we have residents in trouble, we had the Council on aging too, where, where all these issues require, I believe, government to think about working collaboratively. So that when there's a mental health issue that we don't often, you know, get all the time or the resources maybe that in the future we'll need, but that has been so important lately, that, you know, we understand that sometimes it can be the condition, that it gets aggravated by the condition of the home. That mental illness can bring in the Police Department, you know, in, in areas. And so I think with these funds to figure out how we can best not silo these organizations and then work together across a community, I think that that's just a phenomenal opportunity for us as a government to do our work better. I had a great conversation with the, um, Animal Control, with Matt, uh, this past week, talking about, you know, child abuse and animal abuse and how they run and domestic violence in a home and how they all run together.
Yep.
So I think it's just, uh, i- it's just a matter of better communication and, and, coordination of resources and then trying to figure out if we need more head mental health resources, you know, that, that we get them. You know, because whether it's housing or, I mean, it's all, it's all connected. It's just all connected. So thank you, um, for all this.
Thanks.
Councilor Flowers.
Thank you. I think this is mostly a question actually for Mr. Ailes. Um, and it, it is on the Health Department budget, but I realized I should have asked this kind of going along, um, because I've noticed it on a few other budgets too. So, Mr. Ailes, I'm not asking you to give me the details, but I'm checking my own assumption here. I've noticed, so this is, for an example, page 98, line item, um, or budget item 54261, which is office supplies, um, is, is up. But I've noticed in several departments, this is why I said I should have probably asked earlier, that's been a trend across departments. And so part of what I wanted to check with you, Mr. Ailes, is my assumption, similar to another line item I asked about earlier tonight, are, is this a line item that would have looked artificially lower in, in the last two, 2020 and 2021, because it was an area where there could be savings? So we're really seeing some rebuilding to, both to probably get supplies that were not bought in those years, but also rebuilding towards what would have been in a more pre-pandemic kind of budget? Is that, is my assumption correct? That that's why I'm seeing that trend?
Very perceptive. That's exactly what we're seeing across all departments. Um, you'll recall last year, um, towards the latter part of FY20, um, we were concerned about revenues. And as a result, we, 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 um, actually, uh, made the conscious and responsible decision to limit our end-of-the-year spending. And so a lot of these categories were kind of dwarfed from a typical year in an effort to preserve, um, the, the city's financial stability going into the pandemic. Um, and then when we built our FY21 budget, what we did was we brought down all the spending levels to the, uh, highest level historically that had been spent. So we brought it down again, um, to a level that we could still maintain services, um, but understanding that it was going to be a tight year. So now that we're, uh, seeing the ability to, um, see revenues at a more typical level, we're able to kind of bring those levels right back up to where they were pre-pandemic. So yes, very, very perceptive, Counselor.
Thank you. And like I said, that was not, um, not intending just to ding the Health Department on that. I just, I noticed and thinking, I kept noticing. Um, but, but also want to say that I've also noticed that I think even with the, that line item in many departments that's been up, most of the budgets we're seeing are still sort of flat-level-funded sort of budgets. So I, I, I've been thinking about the hard work that department heads have done to be able to produce that kind of result too. So, um, thank you for helping me check my own assumptions, Mr. Ailes. I appreciate that.
The only thing I would add to that, Counselor, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair, is that also we need to think about the way we've operated over the last year, right? We've had costs that we've incurred, but they've been in a more remote setting. So even though we may have had costs of, you know, additional laptops and hotspots and, you know, uh, different types of costs that we're typically seeing, those costs, for the most part, were funded from other sources, right? So outside of this budget. And so you may not have the typical paper purchases and, and supply purchases that you would in a typical office setting, but our IT costs were up in charge to cares. And so there were other things that were going on that really aren't shown within this budget.
Councilor Rattundo.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. I promise to try to keep it quick and short because it is getting towards the end. Um, Mayor, just a question for you, and this is really, it would be geared towards you, but it is to do with the Health Department. And first, I do want to commend all the work that, uh, Mr. Burke has done and his staff. I mean, even with the inspections with the restaurants and stuff like that, you know, those were the things that we just always. I mean, even with the inspections with the restaurants and stuff like that, you know, those were the things that we just always expected as part of business, you know, testing the water samples and things like that, and then COVID came about. And I think what, as a community or even as a nation, what we didn't realize is how important the border health really is. And so how, you know, they kept a tight staff and and, you know, commended to you guys for always working within the means. But this is something going forward that maybe rethinking how the border health works within the community. I mean, I don't know. I just kind of want to throw it out there going forward. You know, obviously, we've always assumed that the border health would, you know, contact trace the flu, and that's, you know, seasonal or as well as, you know, the inspectional services part and the beaches and all those things. But, you know, the reality is, is we've come to realize this these last fifteen months or so, how important the border health is. Some of the authorities that they really do possess that, you know, people don't realize that the, you know, they created these uh emergency orders with your assistance. So I just kind of want to put out there is, you know, rethinking how the department works.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Counselor. I think I think it's well said. I probably don't need to answer anything right now. I think I think we all know there's a, you know, there there's a going to be a time for all of us to reflect a little bit, looking, you know, looking back as we're moving ahead. Um and and they have, I mean, the the border health, as you know, are are the volunteers who serve on the board, and 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 then there's the staff of the department, and they all have done incredible work on our behalf, for sure.
Okay, I think that um wraps that up. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn financing property in the committee of the hall, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted, uh I've been waiting on this because I promised Counselor Rand I'd get some information on the um uh the McPherson budget.
Okay, sure.
Uh I I can forward this, but let me just just give you a couple of numbers. You you know that the uh the city of Beverly requests the this year is sixty eight thousand four hundred forty eight. The total McPherson budget for FY twenty two that that the Y has been working on, and they shared with me today, is one hundred twenty two thousand seven hundred eighty seven or seven hundred ninety seven. I'm having trouble reading. But um so the city of Beverly funds are sixty eight thousand and change. The Y match is about fifty four thousand. And it is a number of uh it's it's largely a combination of full and part time staff year round and seasonal with a few other costs. So that's just to give you, you know, and and it was pointed out to me by Rebecca Jackson that um this covers operating expenses of running free teen programming, drop in hours, planned activities, grab bags, special events um out of the McPherson Youth Center. I think grab grab bags was a a bit of a COVID thing, right? Uh it does not include any free or fee based programming out of the Douglas Stevens Teen Center. So this is the the whole budget, the sixty eight thousand we put into it plus, you know, Y resources is to run McPherson. It also does not include the operating cost of running the summer McPherson basketball league. So those are just a couple of thoughts to go with the numbers, but I'll forward this on to the clerk if that makes most sense. Um I'll forward it to Christine and Lisa both, and and then you folks can have it have access to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Um so before I ask for a a German, I, on behalf of the President of the Council, Paul, he um actually had to go back to work. Um but I wanted to thank um everybody here tonight on the council. Uh this is our last Zoom meeting. Um it's been a a crazy year. I wanted to thank uh the mayor and his team from the police department, DPW Fire, and everybody in between, people in the departments who people like, um you know, who've been there, like a Sidney McPherson in the planning department to Lisa Kent in the city clerk's office, to Martha Lewis, who's been there on a daily basis this past year. Um there's been a lot of people who worked hard. I mean, you know, I appreciate someone like Kim, who with Bev Cam have kind of, you know, had a pivot and do a few different things differently. Uh a lot of things have happened differently, um and hopefully for the better, um going through this past year. Um so I look at the silver lining, and uh just wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work. Um next, um you know, this is our last meeting. Next Monday will be our first council meeting in the council chambers uh at seven o'clock. Um although before that, if you're really interested, we have a city charter meeting tomorrow night at City Council uh too at seven o'clock. So just wanted to thank everybody. Um shows a lot of people who have gone through this year. It's been, you know, a little challenging, but um just wanted to let everybody know how much we um appreciate everybody's hard work. And and again, hopefully the city um is better for it at the end of it. So thank you, everybody. Um so right that, I want to ask for a motion for um to adjourn financing property. A second. Roll call on financing property.
Okay, Rand.
Yeah.
Flaherty.
Yes. We hear a motion to uh adjourn committee of the hall.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ames.
Yes.
Uh Copeland, Flaherty.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Flowers.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Rotundo.
Yes.
Rand.
Yeah.
And Quincy.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you, mostly next Monday night in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.